It is six thirty. I am going to call this regular meeting of the Littleton City Council to order on December second, twenty twenty five. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Schlatter.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Peters.
Here.
Councilmember Grove.
Here.
Councilmember Reichardt.
Here.
Councilmember Stillwell.
Here.
Councilmember Zink.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson is absent. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise as you are able for the pledge of allegiance. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Councils had a chance to review the agenda. Any changes? Seeing no changes, it's approved without objection. Item four, scheduled appearances and presentations tonight, we have none. Item five, proclamations, no proclamations tonight. Item six, public comment. Public comment period is a time for members of the community come, express opinions regarding issues that are not part of public hearings tonight. We have one tonight. A separate agenda or separate opportunity will be provided for that. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. I'll let you know when you hit your three-minute mark. We expect comments to be civil. Disrespectful or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. When you get to the podium, please state your name and address. For the record, council is not authorized under the open meeting laws to take action at this meeting on any issue raised by public comment during public comment. That is not part of tonight's agenda. And we'll go through the list. We have one person signed up here, Greg Sullivan.
Good evening, council. Gregory Sullivan, Ph.D., Environmental Management and Systems, District Four. And I'm here to speak for climate and kids because serious missteps have already occurred at the West Mineral Costco site, directly affecting children. All trees were removed, two stormwater swales destroyed, and brat asphalt processed next to the South Bridge neighborhood, creating completely preventable dust and air quality hazards. For five months, heavy excavator dug continuously in one swale, sending diesel exhaust towards Primrose Academy with 200 children and Littleton Academy with 460 students and staff combined and nearby homes. Diesel exhaust is a known human carcinogen. Children and women are especially vulnerable, and these early mistakes should give the council pause. I recommended the council, I did recommend, that fines of $150,000 should be paid by Rig and Saunders for their actions. Gasoline vapors contain benzene, a carcinogenic with no safe levels for children. Both schools fall inside the exposure zone. Studies show rising lung cancer in young women who have never smoked. Air toxins like benzene and diesel exhaust are strongly suspected contributors. This year, Costco expanded fuel center operating hours from sixty-three to one hundred and eight per week, nearly doubling the emissions and exposing children during early morning and late evening travel times. A thirty-two pump high-throughput station typically sells over forty thousand gallons per day. No other station this size in Colorado sits next to two schools in a dense neighborhood. City Council extended the moratorium on future fuel centers for six months because current code does not protect schools and neighborhoods. Yet, early site failures and health risks were not fully shared with all council members, and key warnings were disregarded. A project of this magnitude should be evaluated under updated protections, not rushed through outdated rules. My request matched the Quincy and Sheridan Costco's. They both have twelve pumps. Why do we have thirty-two? This reduction would have cut emissions, tanker traffic, long-term contamination risk, and aligning neighborhoods and school safety. Counsel, counsel, the facts were known, warnings ignored, critical information withheld. Reduce the fuel center to twelve pumps, or, or be remembered as a council that knowingly put 660 children in harm's way. Children need to be at the center of the climate change debate and crisis, not an afterthought or no thought at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. There's no one else signed up. Is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak? Corey?
Corey Palmero, District Four. Wasn't able to be here for the swearing-in. I had a commitment, but I just wanted to congratulate all of you that were in the election and the new faces. And I'm excited to see what you're going to bring to the city of Littleton. And what a refreshing day it is that the elections are over. I haven't looked on social media in a while now, and it's, it's been tremendous relief. The only thing I wanted to bring up is, is with vacancies coming on different committees, I know there's a lot of committees in the city. Whatever you do, whatever influence you have, I don't know to what extent, I would just ask that you try and keep them as diverse as possible. I think that would go a long way with, with helping the city come back together after all the disputes that went on prior to the election. And now that we're post, it'd be good to just make sure that you've got people from both sides, three sides, four sides, kind of all giving their voices. They could be heard. So, thank you, and happy holidays. If I don't talk to any of you, wish you Merry Christmas, and good luck with all the stuff you have coming up. It's exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. Anybody else in the audience that wish to speak? Pam?
Good evening, new council. Although, I'm reminded that I, as a citizen, address the body. I do not address individuals. Sometimes, we can meet with you personally, and I appreciate, appreciate the personal time that you all spend on all of those conversations that we never see, that we don't know about, and that you meet with your constituents and other people who care. And that's a huge amount of your time and investment in this job, and I appreciate that. But, again, I have to address you as a body because you act legally as a body. And so, I'll just kind of mention that. But, I did want to speak about the consent agenda items for the farm lease agreements for South Platte Renew and the depositing of solids on these farms. I think I've said this for over ten years in public comment, and so I'll say it again. There are constituents in these solids that are toxins. There is federal regulation that was set up to, maybe in a more innocent time, say, yeah, we should do this. But it hasn't been updated, and we've got to have that federal regulation updated. And, yes, it causes more expense for water treatment, and it should, because we have more people, we have less regulation of all the, all the chemistry that goes into our water plants, and we've got to fix that. I, this is an obligation to future generations. It's also an obligation to biodiversity and habitat. So, I'm concerned about these toxic constituents that are in that stuff and the buildup on it, especially of it, in these farms. So, I'm concerned about that. On the other hand, it is good that the prefass grant is inherent, and I hope you do approve that. It needs work, and there are many other components that we need to study as well. South Platte Renew is a leader, but there's a lot more to do with water treatment, and so let's keep moving forward in that, in that area. And I guess that's all I'm saying now. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience wish to speak tonight before I move on? Yes, sir.
Thank you. My wife and I were doing the kid trade-off shuffle. I am here.
Can you just say your name?
Oh, yes.
On the official record, thank you.
Yes, sorry. My name's Peter Friar. I live at eight thirty-four West Crestline Avenue in District Two, and I am here to talk about the intersection at Prentice and Huron. My neighbor Andrew Shad was here a couple weeks ago speaking to you all, and I'm here speaking about the same issue. He and another neighbor of ours, Rose, has an email coming to some of you. So, I wanted to discuss the safety of this particular intersection. If you all have ever seen this intersection, it's a bit of a nightmare. Huron comes down, and it's about, I think it's like a hundred and thirty feet crossing to get from one side to the other. It's the main access point to get to Progress Park. So, we've lived in this neighborhood for eight years, and my kids have grown up. We live within a quarter mile of four parks: Progress Park, Cornerstone Park, Powers Park, and then the little circle park that's over there. And I don't feel confident to send my kids independently to go to any of them because the intersections are a total nightmare. My neighbors and I have put in for the traffic calming, and so we saw that was on the agenda, but it seems to be, maybe we're going to be thinking about it, bringing it forward. We'll take a look, check the traffic. There was a couple traffic numbers I did want to give you that are not in there, and that number is one hundred, which is, we keep a tally every year of how many trick-or-treaters we have at the house, and we have about a hundred kids that come to our house every year in our neighborhood, which means there's potentially a hundred kids in this neighborhood who are not able to cross that street to get over safely to the other side. Between cars obstructing views and the time, and the time it takes to get across the crossing there, it's really quite dangerous, and I think it's just a matter of time before we have some major issues there. So, I just wanted to put in my advocacy that that could be expedited. I've seen within, in town and other parts of town where we've had crosswalks and traffic calming things come in very quickly. We have a lot of kids in this neighborhood. It's one of the only entrance points to these great trails that we have near us, and so I think it would also help with cars, too. If you've ever driven through that intersection, it's a little gnarly. So, anyway, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Peter. And we did get the emails from Andrew and Rose this afternoon.
Okay.
And they were included in the record for the meeting.
Excellent.
Anybody else wish to speak tonight? Seeing no one, we will move on. Let's see, council, we'll start with the new guy over there.
Thank you. Can you use my new seat here? Thank you all for joining us tonight. I just thought I'd speak to with, you know, the holidays right now, and everyone shopping, speak to our small business community here in Littleton as they make our experience here so special. They're working hard, they're employing, providing good jobs and building wealth in our community. My sense from talking to the business community is it's pretty hard to do business here in Littleton. I'm hoping we can do better in that effort, and I just thank you to all the small business owners for working hard during the holidays right now.
Ms. Grove?
Yeah, the week before Thanksgiving, Councilmember Reichardt, myself, and our deputy city manager went to the National League of City Conference, and it was held in Salt Lake City. This is a, there are people from all over the United States that come together and learn about what different cities are doing. There are a variety of different tracks talking about civility, innovation, creative funding, health and well-being, and economic development. And one of the things about this workshop I like is that they have mobile workshops. So, everybody gets in a bus and they go around with a theme. One of the ones I saw was affordable housing, and I wanted to see if they had any secret sauce. And they use government funding, just like we do. The only little bit of secret sauce they have is that the church has a lot of, the Mormon church has a lot of land that they're donating, and they donated for this, you know, for affordable housing. In Salt Lake, they do a lot of repurposing of buildings. There was a church where they made into sixteen market rate units. There was, we saw a recreation center that they converted into affordable housing. Seventy-five percent were affordable, twenty-five percent market rate. That was interesting. Also saw the impact of the film industry and how they work with the permits of these large events. Saw the place where they filmed High School Musical, if anybody's ever seen that. And they actually have tours every afternoon, anywhere from fifty to two hundred people come and look at this high school. So, if you're ever in Salt Lake and want to do that. One of the sessions I went to was AI and how cities can use that for, how they can use bots, how they can use it for data analytics, as well as content creation. And there was, in the track on civility, I went to the session that talked about community engagement and how to work together and not see people that you disagree with as an enemy. Rochester had a very interesting neighborhood program to bring people together where they took each district, kind of like we have four districts, and they had a coordinator, and that coordinator brought people together to discuss solutions and come up with problems, and then execute on those problems with the help of the city. And one of the byproducts of this, not only did it help the city and the community, but it helped people combat that feeling of being alone and building a sense of community. So, I thought that was a great program, and since we've been going to be hiring a citizen engagement person, it was of interest to me. So, it was a great conference. I was glad I was able to go and learned quite a bit. The other thing I wanted to mention is if you have a chance to go to Town Hall and see the play Annie, it's very fun. I saw it last weekend. And last, this is way in advance, but I wanted to let people know in, that are here in the room or who are watching, that on March seventh, I'm going to have a citizen meeting from ten to eleven fifteen at the museum. Everybody in the city is invited. And I do this every year because I take being a citizen advocate very much to heart. I like to hear from people, especially from people who don't always come to this meeting and don't always know exactly what's going on, but have an interest in their community. It's very different to hear what other people find important, so in terms of having people in the same room talking to each other. As always, if any citizen wants to talk to me one-on-one, either via phone, a meeting, or over email, I'm available. My contact information, like everybody's contact information here, is on our website. So, I invite anyone that wants a one-on-one or just a quick conversation, it's something I am open to. So, I look forward to seeing you at that meeting if you want to put it on the calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rickert?
Thank you. I want to say thank you to Colleen and the mayor for letting me move. I was not leaving Pam. I wanted to be able to see the people in front of me, and you can't see them from over there. And so, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
He's got younger eyes, so maybe he can see them.
Everyone has younger eyes. I think, I'm feeling very old. Wanted to say thank you for Pam for hitting all the highlights on the conference. I just want to say thank you to Pam and Mike. We, I think we did a great team building on that trip, and I'm really glad I got to do that. And then, want to say thank you to my colleagues who accompanied us on the Candlelight Walk wagon. That was a lovely time. I really enjoyed it, and thank you for the community showing up. It was a well-attended, beautiful event. Thanks to everybody who worked to put it together, and that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Zink?
I was going to talk about the Candlelight Walk. Just thought it was a great opportunity for the community to get together. It was nice to see some new faces on the, on the, I mean, it was only my second parade, so it was, it was cool. It's just a really cool experience, and it was packed. It was a fantastic turnout. The, the weather was lovely, and as we take a turn into winter, hopefully tomorrow, I'll be looking back on that fondly, I'm sure.
Yeah, we all like seeing Maddie.
Yeah. She's the much better half, so, yeah. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. A couple of things from me. First, just to kind of, oh, I am skipping you, sorry. Mayor Pro Tem Peters.
Thank you. My only comment is going to be that I have office hours this Friday and next Friday and the nineteenth. So, if you want to stop by Bemis and discuss anything from nine to noon those days, I would like to see you. That's all.
Anything else? Sorry. Just mentioned that yesterday was World AIDS Day, which is a public, public recognition of those who have died from the disease and a public honor of the efforts to contain the disease and to raise public awareness among the general public. And so, I just wanted to put that out there. I guess the U.S. government is no longer recognizing federal, or World AIDS Day, so I just wanted to put that out there because health awareness is really important. Let's see, this weekend, Councilmember Reichardt and I attended a, kind of a sad event. I don't know if people saw on the news that Officer Katherine Hidalgo passed away a few weeks ago. She was just twenty-six, one of our police officers here. She died because of a medical emergency while she was off duty, and I just wanted to publicly send our condolences to her family and also to the entire police department. It was a tough weekend for them, a tough time for them to get through, losing one of their own. On brighter note, we have the holiday evening at the museum is coming up on December fourteenth from five to eight. And then, I just had a couple kind of public comments I heard about, kind of directed some questions at the city manager, so pay attention, Jim. I noticed, I did hop on Nextdoor this morning for a reason, accidentally somehow, but I noticed that there was some complaints about Getty's, I think it was Getty's Avenue being shut down right at school drop-off in front of Heritage, and it seemed like it was because of Excel, but I don't know how the city works with our utilities when they have a closure of a street, how we notify people, because people weren't quite taken back that the street was closed at that time, so just that. And also, in line with winter coming tomorrow, we're supposed to get a few inches of snow, and I know we had a discussion a while back about our snow removal plan. Just to remind people that it is property owner's responsibility to remove the snow on sidewalks that are adjacent to their property. And I did have someone ask me, especially with the question about Euclid Avenue with those new wider sidewalks and other places, I remember hearing something about how much we have to shovel. Does it have to be the entire path? Looking back through our code, it just said any, snow on any sidewalk. So, I don't know if that is something we need to make clear, because as we do some more infrastructure improvements, some of these, the walk and cycle tracks that are ten feet wide, if we have any of those on, against private property, are they required to shovel those? So, that might be something we need to look at to clean up in our code, or just figure out if it's somewhere else that I didn't see where it was. And then, along with the public comment about the intersection over in District Two, I know we got those emails this afternoon, late this afternoon, and sent them to the city clerk, see if the city manager could pass those on to Public Works to take a look at those. I hope they can take a look at it, see if, how that fits into the Safer Streets little project. So, that's it. So, city manager?
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, members of the council. Several things tonight. First of all, I also want to just share excitement about the Candlelight Walk, which I can let the council know that we had, based on our, our placer AI data, which is based off of cellphone services and hits, we had fifteen thousand seven hundred people for the Candlelight Walk, which is up from eleven thousand eight hundred last year and approximately that level for the prior few years. So, you know, I think weather helps. It was a beautiful evening, but I know that our team also had more, more marketing, much more active, you know, presence with, with this event. So, I want to thank them and just thank the community for coming out. So, I'll have more kind of, more on that data for council in the next couple days.
It might have been the dancing candle and dancing reindeer that were on TV a couple days prior to that.
Could have been, yeah, could have been. Second thing tonight, I don't know if we have, if I have a, I do, right here. Also, excited to just share, in case council or the public have, have not driven past, that the restoration of the High Line Canal Trail Cutover from the High Line Canal to Jackass Hill Park is, is complete and open. And I want to just thank our partners at, at South Suburban Parks and Rec for working this project in this year, following all the work that we did to kind of clarify that, that trail. But it's, it's wider. The resident next door now has some privacy fence there, and the, much of the, the trail has been cleaned up. So, I just want to really thank our partners, especially Melissa Reese Thacker, who kind of took the lead in making sure that this could get done, and Will Berenger, who managed the project for South Suburban. Along this same line, I just want to let council know that that area is not quite finished because one of the last components of the Mineral East traffic calming work that's happening on Jackass Hill Park is advanced pedestrian crossing lights that will match the, the concrete work and the crossing that's there. So, when that's complete, it'll be a really much enhanced crossing and also trail there, and we're, we're looking for, looking forward to that, that completion in the next few weeks. Next thing tonight, I do want to comment on the, the email and the gentleman who spoke tonight about the Huron and Prentice traffic calming concerns. And I know that our team has heard that, and I will pass these, these emails and the comment along tonight back to our team and ask them to, again, kind of give some assessment and some, and have some, some communication with the residents there about kind of circumstances that are with the residents there about kind of circumstances that our, our team is seeing and where it falls in our traffic calming program priorities. So they can have some answers on that. Just speaking to one of the comments made, made tonight about the consent agenda and the items from our partners at South Platt Renew, I just want to let, let council know, we do believe these are, these are appropriately on the consent calendar tonight because really, the, the farm's leases continues in existing practice that puts some waste from the plant to beneficial use and saves a lot of money in the, in the treatment. These leases will continue that. And then, the, the grants that you, you see will, will actually allow the plant to be, again, proactive as, as we know them to be in further researching the contents of the soil for PFAS and looking for further solutions. So both of our, we do have partners from SPR here, but that's what, that's what those are. Want to comment on the mayor's questions or points. The first one about Getty's, Getty's Avenue, because I know that morning rush around Heritage is already complicated enough. That, that work that was, was happening was the purview of Excel, and that work was, was unpermitted today. So our staff...
Unpermitted?
Unpermitted. So our staff had had some communication with them, but there was not a completed permit process. And they didn't have a, have an approved plan with the city. So our staff responded quickly out there and has followed up accordingly with kind of how that, that works and will be, you know, working with them as they have follow-up work to do that in a permitted way and a different time than when it happened today. I have one more item. You may have seen some changes in our lobby as you came into the, into the council chambers tonight. I just want to let, let council know what's happening. I think the main headline is that we want that space to be more, more hospitable than it has been. It's been a goal for some time, and our, our facility staff, along with other departments, like our city clerk and, and IT, have done some work to put up some new... You might notice the, the photo wrap highlighting the sun over Sturm Park Pond that's been installed on the windows over our 911 operations center. We also have, you'll be seeing reinstallation of the Open Skies artwork that was, that was designed to be suspended from the ceiling in the lobby space. You'll also see the installation of more furnishings. We, we want that space to be more comfortable. The more hybrid work and the more kinds of meetings, the way work is transitioning, we want that space to be comfortable for those kinds of spot meetings and spot work as our public and our, our staff need that. And then, we also have a, the, the construction zone that you have out here will, will support a new touchstone, touchscreen monitor that will display the history of our city council and our mayors. So we want to bring that kind of touch to the, the council chamber space. Want to give some credit to our mayor for suggesting that some time ago. We want to have some, some history there of, of our councils and some feature on, on mayors who have, who have served. So we'll be, those will be, be coming along in the coming weeks. And with that, Mayor, those are my, my comments for tonight.
City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, to piggyback off of Mr. Becklinburg. In regard to the farm leases, that will actually be coming back for public hearing on the 16th. So as it's a long-duration lease of city-owned property, you will be seeing that. And public will have an opportunity to weigh in then. That's all I have. Thanks, bye.
Thank you. All right, let me get the... All right. That leads us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items can be adopted by a simple motion. All ordinances must be read by title prior to a vote on the motion. Any consent agenda item may be removed at the request of a council member. Item A, ID 25188, a motion to adopt the 2026 city council meeting calendar. B, ordinance 272025, ordinance on first reading authorizing our four farm lease agreements on behalf of South Platt Renew. C, resolution 1202025, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the cities of Littleton and Inglewood and the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment for a per and polyfluoroalkyl substance, or PFAS or PFAS, grant award in the amount of $100,000. C, ordinance 292025, an ordinance on first reading of the city of Littleton, Colorado repealing and reenacting Title I, Chapter 10, Section 3, renaming 3A Capital Improvement Fund to the Sales Tax Capital Fund. E, ordinance 282025, an ordinance on first reading, amending Title I, Chapter 9, Section 4 of the Littleton City Code relating to council member compensation. There we go. My computer's frozen here, sorry. And F, ID 25268, a motion to approve minutes of the November 18th, 2025 regular meeting of city council.
Mayor, I move to approve agenda items A through F.
Second?
There is a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda in its entirety. Council, any further discussion or debate on the consent agenda? Seeing none, the voting is open.
The vote is six in favor. The motion carries.
Great, thank you. Item nine, we have general business here. We have just one item on business here. ID 25262, discussion of mayor and city council liaison opportunities and assignments. I just wanted to have a public opportunity for council to kind of go through and talk about the liaison positions that we have to our city boards and commissions and to any of our outside bodies there. I know I've spoken to everyone, and I think things are lining up pretty good, but I just wanted to make that public. I don't know if the PC manager, did you guys have anything else to add to that? Or you just wanted to kind of go through?
No, looking for your direction, Mayor.
Great. All right. Can you, I think the, the ones that we're moving, I know, is Mayor Pro, former Mayor Protem Bar was on Dr. Cog. And I believe Councilmember Reichert would like to do Dr. Cog moving forward. And, and also free up, what was the one you were on?
Next Gen.
Next Gen. And I think I talked to Councilmember Henderson. She would be good to go on Next Gen and the ESB on those, which also was, Mayor Protem was taking that on. And then, we had a former council member, Driscoll, who did the, the DDA and also worked with kind of the business chamber liaison there. And I think Councilmember Stillwell, that was what you were looking at. And there was the Arapahoe County Transit One. I can't remember the full name of it. What is it?
That, that one.
That one? That was the new, that was a new one.
Arapahoe County Innovative Transit Plan.
Correct. I think Councilmember Zink wanted that. Council, am I missing anything? Does anyone else have anything that they, I know Councilmember Grove said she was, wanted to stay with the ones that she had on there?
Did you mention a CDOT liaison?
I think that was Councilmember Reichert was, I think you, you were kind of all things transportation?
Yeah, it's my intention to be all things transportation, except for the Arapahoe County one, which Councilmember Zink wants to do, and I appreciate him carrying part of that load, so, that's great.
And then, I'm continuing with Mile High Flood District, Metro Mayor's Caucus, and then, which I will be taking over as chair of the Metro Mayor's Caucus beginning in February, since I was vice chair last year. And then, the Arapahoe County mayors, managers, and commissioners that we go to. And we also occasionally attend the Jefferson County one, but not as regular as the, the Arapahoe County one. And then, we had a kind of a, a review committee. I don't think we really have, we have a due process for the review committee. So I think it's, Mayor, Mayor Protem will work with, like, kind of do the handbook and, and work with council on those review for the direct reports. I don't think we need an actual committee for that. But anything else, council? Did I get everything there? You got everything?
You nailed it.
Clear? Okay. Great. Just want to make sure. Thank you. Okay, well, then we'll move on to item 10. Ordinances on second reading and public hearings. We have one item tonight. And this is, as it is public hearing, speakers can sign up to speak in the back on this item specifically, since this is not a general public hearing, a public comment, but just a hearing for this item. We have ordinance 25 of 2025, an ordinance on second reading approving a rezoning of the parcel located at 5850 South Broadway from Neighborhood Commercial to Corridor Mixed. And I just wanted to put out there, as we don't really have many quasi-judicial or rezoning applications anymore on council, because a lot of things with the new land use code has gone to administrative decisions on that. But when we do have a rezone, rezones do come to council. And I just want to reiterate with council that when we take a look at this, we're, kind of the two big things that we have is, this is quasi-judicial. That means we're acting like a judge. And so, we have to take all the information that we get at this hearing. That's officially part of the record and not outside information. So we don't have any ex parte communications with people. It'd be like talking to the defendant or defense attorney, a judge doing that without having opportunity for the plaintiff or prosecutor, whoever, whoever the other, the other side is on there, to, for fairness. And then, when we make our decisions, this is, this is not a necessarily kind of, just not to attack Councilmember Grove, a public advocacy, constituent advocacy here. We have to follow strict criteria. And so, just because, if, if we hear a whole bunch of people, just because a bunch of people don't want something, doesn't mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to say, sorry. That, the, the criteria that we have, we have to follow with, the five items are consistency, compatibility, traffic, adequate public facilities, and natural environment. And we have to make sure that if we approve something, that it goes with those criteria. Or if we deny something, that we find a reason why that they do not meet those criteria there.
After 10 years on historical preservation board, I'm kind of familiar.
Oh, I know you are. I wasn't, I wasn't trying to tell you. I was just saying to the general public that the idea, if a lot of people show up and say, "We don't want this," if it doesn't meet the criteria, we have to go to the criteria. I wasn't talking to you. I was, you had mentioned, you, you said that in your public comment. It just sparked my, my memory. Sorry if I, it felt like I was attacking you. I was not. And so, the way we'll do this is, we will have a presentation by staff, and then we'll have a presentation by the applicant here. Will council be able to ask questions? And then, we will have a public hearing. Will the public will be able to come and talk on this? And then, only after that, we'll, we'll have a motion and then have discussion and talk about that actual application. So I'm going to turn that over to City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And given the kind of hearing that this is, I will very quickly turn this over to our, our planning staff. Please, Andrea.
Thank you, and good evening, council. My name is Andrea Vaughn, a senior planner with Community Development. And we are here tonight to discuss ordinance 102025, the proposed rezoning for CarMax at 5850 South Broadway. So tonight, we will go through the requested action from the applicant. We will go through the application details, as well as a run-through of the decision criteria and analysis. And then, staff will propose a recommendation. So tonight, the applicant is requesting the rezoning of the eastern portion of 5850 South Broadway from Neighborhood Commercial to Corridor Mixed. The applicant is seeking a rezoning of the portion of the site. And this came to staff, this application came about after discussions with the applicant's team. When they came to staff for discussion, seeking to improve the portion of the site that is zoned Neighborhood Commercial, or NC, in order to store vehicles that will be repaired and then sold. Staff, along with City Attorney's Office, found that this use services the vehicle sales, rental, and leasing as accessory to the use, which is active in the Commercial Mixed, or CM, portion of the lot. To allow this use in the portion zoned NC, staff and the City Attorney's Office found that a conditional use, which was recently approved unanimously by the Planning Commission, and a rezoning would be required. The applicant did hold two neighborhood meetings as required by the Unified Land Use Code, or ULUC. And staff did notice all neighborhood meetings as, and all public hearings according to ULUC requirements. And so, a little bit about this site. You'll see that the slide notes that the site is 9.47 acres. That is the entirety of the site, including the CM portion. The portion that we are talking about tonight is actually about 2.8 acres. And this lot was split sometime between 1993 and 2005, according to the records that we do have. We aren't entirely clear on the reason why the site was split zoned. Initially, it was, prior to the ULUC, it was zoned B2, so Business 2, and T, Transitional. And that zoning was carried over when the ULUC was adopted in 2021. It is staff's best assumption that this site was zoned, was split zoned, Transitional, and then carried over to Neighborhood Commercial. To be a little bit protective of the neighboring residential from commercial activity, staff finds that the ULUC, when updated, did help take care of some of these concerns. And we'll talk about those later on. But this lot was split zoned, again, sometime between 1993 and 2005. So this application seeks to correct that. And in 2019, Envision Littleton did designate this property as Corridor Mixed in the future land use and character map. And again, the, so on your screen, you'll see the portion of the site that we're talking about is highlighted. And see, it is bright pink and hatched on the right. And the applicant is just seeking to bring the entirety of the site into one singular zoning corridor mixed. And again, this is pretty consistent with the comprehensive plan, which did designate this entirety of the parcel Commercial Mixed Use. I guess, before moving on, I also want to note that, again, we kind of touched on that the conditional use permit was sought in order to allow for the vehicle, vehicle sales, rental, and leasing portion of the site. It is a conditional use in the CM Zone District. So a new conditional use was approved by the Planning Commission on October 27th, with the condition that the rezoning is approved. A little bit about this site and its surrounding areas. So to the north, we do have CM zoning, as well as to the west, which would be CarMax's property. To the south, we have another split zone parcel, which is split zone CM and NC as it is on the site today. And actually, to the east of the site, there is single-family residential, but it is not located in the city of Littleton. It is actually City of Centennials. Staff, all staff and the applicant also did work very closely with City of Centennial throughout this process in order to gain approval before moving forward to public hearing. On your screen, you will see the decision criteria for a rezoning. The applicant must meet all five of these decision criterias in order to be recommended for approval. And staff does find that the, that the applicant does meet all five criteria. We find that it is consistent with the comp plan, with that Corridor Mixed Use character area being already on the site. We also think that this, it is compatible with the surrounding area as the site is already used for vehicle sales. Staff also finds that there are negligible impacts to traffic. We believe that rezoning allows for the staging of vehicles and would not really create any new negative traffic impacts. We don't expect any adverse impacts to public facilities. And staff did not find that there are any natural features on site and does not anticipate any negative impacts to the natural environment. So tonight, staff is recommending approval... So tonight, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning, ordinance 10, series 2025, with one small caveat. It was brought to our attention tonight that the legal description in Exhibit A is not entirely correct, and staff would require a corrected Exhibit A prior to recording with the county.
Is that a condition in the rezone, that we have to do anything about that? Do we have to make an amendment, or is that just?
I think we get, we're okay to proceed. In terms of the legal description, it's just a meets and bounds that probably no one would actually be looking at. But if you looked at it and you followed the lines, it would form a different sort of description. But everything that you'll see will depict the actual property.
Thanks. Councilors, anyone have any questions for staff? Councilmember Grove?
Can you clarify what the difference is? It sounds like they're using that portion anyhow. And what, what are they using it for now, and what will be different? I mean, it's just not real clear.
The portion of the lot is largely unimproved. The conditional use that was granted in 2011 allowed for this portion of the site to be used only for employee and customer parking, not for the staging of vehicles.
Councilmember Stilwell?
Excuse me. Thank you. I was asking to, could you speak a little to the process behind this, as to why it took two and a half years to come to, to council now today?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Stilwell. So traditionally, a rezoning would take approximately nine months to, to process. I know in this specific project, there was a lot of communication on the front end with the applicant regarding some of the stuff that was presented today about related to use and collaboration with their, their team and our City Attorney's Office to kind of ensure the process that we were putting down aligned with city code. From the time that we received a completed application with them, from the time that the rezoning specifically was approved, not the conditional use, but the rezoning, was approximately six months. So that process went quicker than anticipated traditionally, but the, the conditional use is really what held that up. So that has to go in conjunction with the rezoning to ensure these two things work hand in hand together. So those go to one public hearing at Planning Commission.
I know my understanding is, we're gonna have more conversations with you all in January, and I look forward to hearing more from community development and, and your processes around all of this. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Rickert?
So I'm, the, you know, I feel like one of the biggest challenges, and Matt got to spend 45 minutes today with me talking about this big challenge, which is kind of transitions between single-family homes and, and other uses. And so it feels to me like, kind of the downside, the possible downside for this is for our centennial neighbors, not while CarMax is using it for what they're, they're planning on using it, but for what could be permitted if this land is sold and redeveloped in some other way. I, this, can you talk to me about, you know, if someone wanted to redevelop this, what are the types of uses that they now can do that we, that they couldn't, well, they not now, but they would be able to do if we approved this, versus what they can't do without the approval, because we've kind of tried to make it a transition zone?
Certainly. So it would definitely open up the possibility of, of anything that is allowed in CM. I would, look to Reed to correct me if I'm wrong here, but the conditional use runs with the land, so the conditional use would need to be dissolved as well. So if CarMax were to go out of business, and let's say a multifamily wanted to come in, that conditional use still kind of governs what can happen on that parcel. That would need to be dissolved. And then beyond that, we do have buffer yard standards, which are being applied in the conditional use, requires, I believe this is about a 17-foot buffer between the develop, so landscaped area between the development to the fence line. And that would be, that would likely be maintained depending on the type of development, because we would see this as a CM being developed next to an MLR, SLR, those are the standards that we applied here. And then beyond that, we also have bulk and mass standards. I'm not able to speak very coherently and intelligently to those tonight, but we have applied those on other projects similarly, where you have something coming in that's much greater in scale. And so we have standards that seek to really scale that back and mitigate those impacts to particularly single-family homes.
I just want to acknowledge that that was a tricky question that I sprung upon you, and so thank you very much for, for taking it. Thank you very much.
Just to piggyback on that, though, but this is a single parcel that has two different zonings, two-thirds of it roughly, is already CM zoning, and it's just this kind of landlocked portion that has no access except through the rest of the parcel, correct?
Yes, it would be this, like, 2.8 acres section of the site that would have the CM allowances. The CM already exists on the western portion.
Correct, yeah. I just wanted to clarify that, then. Any other, I have some other questions, but I'm gonna wait till after the applicant presents. Good? Would the applicant like to present?
Hello. Hello, council. I'm Taylor Rains, with CenterPoint Integrated Solutions, representing CarMax tonight. As mentioned, this is the property that is currently off of South Broadway, just south of Bellevue, within the city of Littleton. And as mentioned, parcel is currently split zoned. So eastern portion is Neighborhood Commercial, and the western portion is Corridor Mixed, sorry. So the goal of this rezone is partially to create consistency across our site, for one, and then also just to allow for all of the requested uses that CarMax needs on their property. As mentioned, right now, that eastern portion only allows for the customer employee parking. We would like to be able to utilize it for vehicle storage as well, within that lower portion that's undeveloped. The plan for this future expansion that's tied to the rezone would be to continue to use that, that section that's currently developed strictly as customer employee, and the expansion would strictly be whip parking, which for CarMax, that basically means it's just storage of vehicles as they're being prepared for the sales lot. This is the site plan that we're currently working off of for that expansion. As you can see, it's, it's kind of just a, a small 0.75 acre expansion of that whip area, which constitutes about 125, or 128 extra spaces for us. So it's completely separate from everything else, and doesn't have any public access. And then, kind of just reiterating what staff has already mentioned, we've worked with them for several years on this to make sure that we're compliant. Proposed use is consistent with city's ULUC and comp plan. Proposed use is compatible with the adjacent properties, and the development will minimize any adverse impacts to adjacent property owners. Traffic generated by our expansion is negligible to the existing. Proposed use considers health, safety, and welfare of surrounding parcels in the community, and the proposed development will not cause harm to natural features on or adjacent to the property. And that's all I have, so I'll turn it over to questions.
Council, any questions?
Yes.
Councilmember Zink?
Hi, thank you for joining us tonight. Just so that I understand, are you saying whip area?
Yes, yeah, sorry, so.
No, no, that's like W-H-I-P, like get in the whip and?
No, so W-I-P, work in progress.
Thank you. Okay, I'm like, well, it kind of makes sense. Okay, so I'm just envisioning what this looks like in practice. Is this just essentially like more parking, but it's a special parking area where you all stage the vehicles, or is it, you know, covered, or what's it really look like?
So it's, yeah, it's, it's got a wall around it, so it's separate from both sales lot and customer employee. You can't really even, like, look into it unless you're kind of trying to. So as mentioned, it's, it's basically, like, say a car is waiting on a registration or something. After they purchase it, they'll have it stored there for the time being, until they can put it on the sales lot to be displayed for sale.
Okay. And that section, the whip area, will only be where it's currently undeveloped?
Correct.
Okay, and then the rest?
There is a small section that's just, my directions might be a little bit off here, just south of the, the building, there's a small whip area that is currently in use. So, yeah, this would, this expansion area would only be whip in that undeveloped part of the parcel.
Okay, and then the, the rest of that area that's currently, it's just north of that, but it's part of this rezoning, that's currently customer and employee parking, right?
Correct.
And I just want to make sure I heard you right, that's just staying the same?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Grove?
With this, with this rezone goes through, are you gonna plan on any improvements? I mean, are you gonna pave the lot, are you gonna put more lights or anything, or is it just going to be the same?
Yes, as part of the expansion, there will be, the, the area will be paved. There is a lighting plan that's associated with the expansion as well. I think that was attached as part of our CUP application. But yes, it'll have, you know, full improvements.
And how will that impact the neighbors? I saw that there was a little concern about noise and lighting, and now, I don't know if it's different that it's paved or not paved, or different kinds of cars there for different reasons. Do you think that would negatively impact the, or are you taking that into account in terms of what kind of lighting you use and that kind of stuff?
So in our coordination with staff, we've kind of made sure that, yeah, that we're taking into account those effects and minimizing them, especially with lighting, keeping light shielded towards our property and away from the neighbors.
Thank you.
Other questions? I just kind of a question, I don't know who exactly it's for, probably I'll address it to you first, but, so you have the eastern portion, which is Neighborhood Commercial, roughly, two-thirds of it are already used for parking, and the lower third, or whatever it is, is not used for parking. You want it used for parking, but parking's not allowed in there, even though two-thirds of it's already used for parking?
So yes, different types of parking.
Different types of parking, but I'm just, person sees a car, it's parked. No one knows if it's a employee versus a customer versus a car for sale that's waiting, so. So it's not, you're not really changing a whole lot of, that, you know, two-thirds of that already, that, that portion of the parcel, which doesn't allow parking, that does allow parking because of the conditional use from years ago.
Right.
Okay. And then I guess more for staff, and if they wanted to, if it wasn't the whip parking, if they wanted to have more employee parking down there, would they have needed to go through a rezone? Is it seriously, just because they want to store cars that are for sale there?
Yes, so our definition, well, first and foremost, the conditional use limited the parking to employees and customers, so cars that were coming and going on the daily.
Okay.
And it does not meet the definition of off-site parking in either the current or old code, which is for licensed and operable vehicles parked for a temporary time. And so the storage of vehicles, or the staging of vehicles, really waiting to be serviced and then later sold, we find to be an accessory use of the, of CarMax's core operations, which, so it services their vehicle sales and lease, and leasing, so.
So, so parking cars at a car sale lot is an accessory use to selling cars? How is that not a core use? Or is, does it matter if it's a core use or an accessory use?
Core accessory, I think we would see it still as the same as vehicle sales, whether or not they're staging the vehicles there to be moved on to display later, or whether they're being staged there to be serviced by CarMax, to then later be sold elsewhere. It's still part of the vehicle sales portion of, it's not necessarily parking.
Vehicle sales is not allowed in Neighborhood Commercial?
Correct.
And then one last question. With the split zoning, oh, actually, a couple more questions. The split zoning, when you looked at the future land use map, and it's all, was it Business Park or whatever that, whatever it had in there?
Commercial Mixed Use.
Commercial Mixed Use. I know when we went through the, I wasn't on council, when we did the land use map change there, was there discussion on, hey, this could have been, if we had the, the future land use map there, has it as one type of use? It was just a, an omission to make it all, this one parcel, all the same zoning, even though before, sometime back to 1994, I think is what you said, it had been split?
Sometime between 93 and 2005. My understanding, and the rezoning certainly predates my time for the city, citywide rezoning, was that most of the zone districts were just kind of transferred over to what their most like was in the new zoning code. So Transitional was most like Neighborhood Commercial, and so that was automatically transferred over. In terms of the decisions that were made, I'm not sure, I would want to kind of hesitate a guess at that.
I was just wondering why it couldn't have been a, just an omission or an error, like say, hey, this, this is in our future land use map, this is what it should have been. It could have been easily corrected without having to go through a two-year process of rezoning.
I'm not sure. I think in staff's opinion, we can see that the, the site was very clearly intentionally split zoned, again, for what, whatever reasons those might be. So I think it, it wasn't an error to be corrected.
And then, along with the, the zoning here, it covers two parcels. I know this is an application from one of the property owners, not the other, but was, did you reach out to the other property owner and asked if they wanted to also be part of this rezone to fix this issue, having your parcel be in two zones?
No, we did not. We only engaged with CarMax through this process.
Do we know, and I know I've asked this in the past, do we have a, kind of inventory of other parcels, I know it doesn't fit with this actual application here, but other parcels that have this zoning issue? I mean, I think if we're having a rezone of a land use type right here, and there's an adjacent property, maybe they want to go through, it might have been more efficient for the city to do it once rather than do it twice, and?
Yeah, I guess from our perspective, we traditionally just engage with the land use, our applicants who come and seek rezoning from us, right? So something that's more related to a broader citywide effort is traditionally, I, I would say initiated by the city, and so we're happy to take a look at what parcels are out there and work to, to make those recommendations of those councils.
And I've, and I've asked that.
Yeah, and I don't know, maybe Reed has some thoughts on this as well. I think from our standpoint, we worked really closely with the City Attorney's Office on kind of trying to figure out the best path forward on this, and so that's kind of where we ended up.
And that's, that's, that's a bigger topic than just this one, but specifically with the property just to the south there, I know we're trying to be more proactive with our communication and community engagement here. Would it not have behooved the city to just at least reach out to that property owner to see if that makes sense to get rid, to get rid of that Neighborhood Commercial?
Yeah, and I guess I could just speak to that, that was not part of our, our process for this specific parcel. Yeah, we didn't, that was just not our approach here, so, something we can definitely look at in the future.
That might be a good idea. Councilmember Rickert?
More of a comment, but, you know, I'm, I'm not 100% sure this was an error. I feel like, I feel like having transition zones is really important for our commercial properties that are up against single-family housing. And so I, I understand your, I appreciate your interest in, in efficiency and getting ahead of things, but I'm, I feel like as we, and I'm not worried about this property, but as we, you know, increase, increase the commercial use in, within District 2, particularly on Littleton Boulevard, I think we just need to be really thoughtful about, about transitions. And, and I understand you have a buffer zone, and that's not what we're really talking about, but, so just you, you and I might not be on the same page.
No, I think we are, I, my concern is that it's, it's a single parcel split. If there were separate parcels zoned differently, that's something, but it's when you have a, if your house, you have a zoning in one half, your house, the other half, it's kind of hard.
Like a party house.
Party house and, okay. Any other questions, council?
No, I was just gonna speak to that point. It's just unusual to have two zonings on one parcel like this. And from my understanding, there's not many of, I haven't, I work in real estate, and I've never seen this before. And so there's also ways of doing this, not within zoning, which is kind of a clunky, difficult thing to change, but if you're looking to do setbacks next to it, you can do that without a zoning. You can do it within the setback portion of code, or, or other areas to address your concerns that don't require. that don't require this whole process.
I would, I would just note that we would typically see a lot of this when we have planned overlay communities where we have, you know, kind of changed the setbacks, it's its own, um, special zoning that we have with planned developments and certain things like that. I'm not sure if there was a PLO ever at this time, but that, uh, or if that was in existence, but that probably would have been a way in which you address kind of some of the buffering issues and the transitional issues, um, by having kind of non-build zones, if you will, or certain larger buffering requirements. So, we'll look at it.
Great. Uh, as this is an ordinance on second reading, it requires a public, uh, comment portion of the hearing, so I'm going to open that up at not seven thirty-seven, um, and we have no one signed up for, would anyone like to speak specifically to this rezone? Sir?
All right, um, Jose Breones, District Three. Um, I think my concern is not necessarily, I, I think, yes, for consistency, this is important, all of these things are important, but like Councilmember Reichert said, I'm not thinking this year, I'm not thinking maybe even five years from now, but I'm thinking thirty years from now, when we have this quarter mixed use, what can this be developed? It may not have traffic impact right now, but it may in the future. Uh, no business is forever, you know, we used to have blockbusters, and then Netflix came, and they started to provide entertainment on demand, and then all of those properties went away, and now they have been developed or rezoned, or, you know, kind of like repurposed. Now, Amazon is selling cars, and I don't know if CarMax will endure, but I, you know, hopefully it will, but it's just kind of like a reality that we have to contend as a city, and it is important to think of this property and other properties that may need to be rezoned, and, in, in a thoughtful approach, and then maybe my comment is more about the process that we engage in towards looking at this, but also towards the future, because this could bring traffic into the area, and it is already an unsafe area, so, um, I'm pretty sure that neighbors on the east and west of this parcel, they will want to see more safety improvements as we maybe develop this, and let's say, you know, CarMax doesn't endure the ti- the test of time, and they sell this property, then it can be redeveloped as a neighborhood, and that will bring more traffic or more people, which is not a bad thing, I'm for, for housing, but I think we need to start approaching this conversation, um, in a landlocked city that we have, in order to start creating those safety improvements, those overall, uh, improvements in our neighborhoods as well, not only on the corridors, right? Like, this is a simple conversation to me, I'm in favor at large, by and large, but I also think that we need to be careful and thoughtful, because this may open up into other areas, um, where it may not be as clear-cut. And then we're having, uh, you know, a lot of people showing up at city council, being mad, and, you know, having all of these things, because, again, it's, it's a difficult conversation, and it's something, and, and I, I applaud you for taking this head-on, and I applaud you also for asking questions about how can be, we be more efficient as a city to make sure that we're, we're having a more proactive approach. Uh, so thank you for taking the time to hear this out, and hopefully approve it, you know, at, at the end of the day, I think it, it's good to have that consistency, but also I encourage all of the council members to have that proactive approach so we can have better conversations in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience wish to speak? Pam?
I'm Pam Chadburn, I live a block or two from here, um, so I, I would totally vote against this rezoning, it is totally inappropriate, very dismaying to hear a new council member say, hey, we can even get out of rezonings in the future by doing something else. Appalling. Um, the point is that zoning is not just for this user. It's very interesting that our staff says, oh, this enables what our current user wants to do, and that is not the reason to rezone. Zoning needs to be designed for function and over decades of time, and that is what was lost in the ULC, it's lost in this discussion, except for, I think Councilmember Reichert put his thumb on this issue, and, uh, it is the driver. This should not be approved, it is not consistent with the housing that's adjacent. Those people have rights and property values that will be impacted negatively by this change, and that's only this current user, and again, the future user could do even more, uh, harmful things to the adjacent homeowners. Those homes have decades left of use, and they will be impacted by whatever's next. Um, the rezoning that we did in the ULC is appalling on Broadway, because it didn't consider the nature of the corridor, our commercial needs and economic development needs over time, uh, none of that is in there, and so the car ownerships got a lot of, uh, uh, benefit, uh, financial and future in our rezoning, and all of the adjacent uses, I think, are suffering. So, and now and in the future, their property values just simply cannot be, um, held up. So, no, uh, I, this is not compatible with the adjacent uses, period, and it's not compatible now or in the future with this new zoning. Vote no. And I find it bad for the environment, also with lighting and drainage and things like that, um, but there's no technical input about that, very interestingly. Um, so, anyway, I, I struggle with how to, um, describe this. Zoning is something that takes place over decades, and I hear these tiny discussions of, oh, they can do this or that for this use, and are, we need to have the technical discussions of outcomes and impacts over time with the compatible adjacent uses, this is not compatible with the adjacent lots. They have rights too, and you should be defending those uses. Um, anyway, I, I'd vote no.
Thank you, Pam, anyone else in the audience wish to speak? Corey?
Thank you, Corey Palmero, District Four. Um, yes, I have two sons, nineteen and, and seventeen, so I am very familiar with Carfax. What I didn't like when I went there is they have all these cars on their lot that you think are for sale, and you go walk your kids through there, and they look at what they want, and you take a whole list back in the store, and like, out of ten cars, only four are for sale because the other six are being titled and whatnot, and this fixes that, is what I think y'all are trying to do, which I love. Um, it's on a, a major corridor, it's on Broadway, eh, what, what NC means is strip malls. What, what, what corridor mix means is really mixed use, which is what you want on these streets like this. You, you want to have the ability in five years, six years, when CarMax does something else and sells it, hopefully at a, at a better number than what it's worth now, that you can get mixed use, that you can get businesses and residential and whatever else you're allowed to do in, in that, in that service done, and for the people that live right next to it, I mean, it's right next to Broadway, eh, eh, you're going to need growth in the city, and this is the place to grow it, so I, I would vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this? See, no one, I'm going to close the public comment portion at seven forty-five. Does council have any other questions, and if not, uh, would someone like to make a motion?
I move to approve ordinance twenty-five dash twenty twenty-five, an ordinance on second reading approving a rezoning of the parcel located at fifty-eight fifty South Broadway, from ne- neighborhood commercial to corridor mixed.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance twenty-five. Uh, council, uh, comments, discussion, uh, this would be a time to explain, um, your thoughts, how you're voting, tied directly to the criteria, if you're going to vote in favor of this, please explain why per the criteria, if you're going to vote against it, please explain why the criteria were not met, so, with the councilmembers. Uh, Andrea, can you put the criteria up on the screen by chance? Is that possible? Or do I have to take it down there? All right, thank you. Councilmember Zink?
Yes, I'll keep my comments brief, I find that this meets, um, the five criteria, I find that it's consistent with the land use and character map of the comprehensive plan in that area, it's compatible, moving on to, uh, criteria two, is compatible with the nearby uses, um, that's what is going on in that area, um, there are other car dealerships directly to the north. Um, I don't find that I'm concerned, I, I, I'm not concerned that this was previously consi- and I understand your position on this perhaps, I don't want to speak for you, but that it was a buffer area previously, or whatever the reason that it was split, it makes no sense to me that it was split in the first place. And I, again, just sticking to the criteria, I find it to be compatible, uh, with the range of uses allowed by the proposed zoning district, um, and other properties in the immediate vicinity of the subject property. I don't, this is not going to increase traffic, um, and, and if I was to consider future potential uses under this designation, I, anything that I would be doing would be speculating, which I don't think is appropriate to do in a quasi-judicial hearing. I have no concerns about adequate public facilities or natural environment, so I will be voting in favor.
Councilmember Reichert?
So, I want to agree with my colleague, um, I, and I also want to, you know, I, I want to say I think it's valuable to allow property owners to use the property the way they want, that's consistent with what they're doing, and I, and I feel like the, what the property owners are asking for is consistent with what's going on in the neighborhood, compatible, um, I don't think it'll increase traffic, I think is adequate public facilities and the, won't impact the natural environment. My comments about kind of future use and transitions is really trying to communicate to the public and communicate to staff that I, I'm not convinced that these split zonings are mistakes, while others may disagree with me, and, and so, I don't want to, uh, rush into, um, um, not having conversations about barriers between single-family households and, and other uses, I think that's a really important, really important work we have to do as Littleton becomes more dense, and I think it will become more dense over the next, for the rest of my, over the, over the future of Littleton, so, but I, I will be voting yes.
Councilmember Stillwell?
I believe it fits the criteria and will be voting yes.
Any other comments? Customer Grove?
Um, I'm probably the lone wolf here, um, I don't agree, on the highest level, without looking at the criteria, it's, to use parking for one thing rather than the other, it really doesn't make a lot of difference, but if I start looking at the criteria, um, and thinking about the future, um, it does change conditions, and it changes the character of the surrounding area. The thing about it is, the surrounding area is not Littleton. It's, um, Broadway, north and south, but if you look over where the residential area, that is not consistent, it's not compatible either. Um, this rezoning may or may not change traffic, probably not in the short run, but it could change it in the long run. Uh, in terms of adequate, uh, public facilities, um, I don't think that pertains as much. In terms of the natural environment, um, the rezoning map may not change the natural environment, but the improvements and the resulting, uh, what happens in order to accommodate could change the natural environment just by virtue of paving the parking instead of leaving it as natural did, so I will not support this.
Mayor Proton?
Uh, I think that it meets all five criteria and will be supporting it.
Uh, and I think the, the thing that everyone has thought about, and, you know, the public audience needs to think about too, is we're not looking at the actual physical layout of, of a dirt field that's there now, but looking at zoning to zoning. Right now, we have, uh, neighborhood commercial moving to corridor mix, they're very similar, both in our corridor mixed use zone type there, and so I think switching from corridor mixed use, or, uh, to corridor mixed use is, is consistent with, uh, the zoning there, the use that the, uh, uh, property owner has, uh, proposed is literally what they are doing on the northern portion of that par- uh, of that portion of the parcel there, um, so it's very compatible, uh, with the use there. Traffic, uh, if you're looking at what's there right now, yeah, it's going to increase traffic, but that's not what we're looking at, we're looking at neighborhood commercial versus corridor mixed use. The traffic between those two land use types i- is not going to be, uh, changed all that much with that. Yes, there are the adequate public facilities, um, and there is really no change in natural environment between neighborhood commercial and corridor mixed use, so, um, I will be supporting this, uh, rezone tonight, and so if there's any other things council would like to add, I think we have a motion, a second, and everyone is, uh, uh, ready to vote? Vote is now open, I have to hit the button like four times, there's four different buttons.
The vote is five in favor with Councilmember Grove voting no, the motion carries.
Thank you, and then before we move on, I just want to say, well, two things, but first, to city manager, can we, uh, as a city, look at, um, parcels that have split zoning? I know there's, uh, one to the north and one to the south of there, and, um, take a look at that, because I know this is something that, you know, I think some people may not even realize, I'm sure they didn't even realize, um, until they went to go do their site plan for this, that they had different zoning there, and I think that's something that the, the city owes it to the property owners there to see what, if there's any discrepancies within a parcel of zoning right there.
We can certainly look into that and prepare a report on the parcel so that we have, um, awareness first of kind of what those are, and then, you know, then I think council can, can think of that, if, um, if there's a project there to.
Well, I'm not saying that there's necessarily a project, but I think I heard some interest from council about this is kind of a weird real estate issue.
Just seeing how many we have and what the situation is, I think, can do that.
And then, if this, something like this happens, where there's a split zoning that splits multiple parcels, couldn't it be the city's policy to like, hey, reach out to the other property owner and not just work with just the one?
We could have that.
It doesn't mean it'd have to happen, but just at least let them know.
Yes.
Yes, okay, because that wasn't the case. Um, and then, um, uh, last item, we have adjournment, before I adjourn, I just want to wish, uh, our city attorney, uh, Happy Birthday Eve. And with that, we are adjourned.